Welcome to our board meeting. I'd like Director Hammerson, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few housekeeping things to cover before we get started. Do we have any members of the media present? If so, would you introduce yourself? Okay, great. Please mute your cell phones. And if you are intending to speak to the board this evening, there is a card at the table. If you would fill that out as soon as possible, we'll collect those and you'll have a chance to address the board. And board members, please remember, and our representatives from the high school, yay! Please remember to turn your mics on when you talk and turn them off when you're finished. And now we have Principal Megan Pertle to give our principal's report.
Alright. Try not to be nervous, but thank you. Thank you to the board and cabinet members for taking time this evening for me to share and highlight this wonderful school. My name is Megan Pertle and I'm the principal at Winchester. This is my third year. And I am very proud to be the administrator at this site and love highlighting all the wonderful things our school community is part of. Next slide. During my time in Roseburg, I've been proud and honored to be part of this school district. I have found that in the past few years with our current strategic plan, it really drives my why each day as well as the why to my staff. We strive to get better each day and having the support of this plan encourages us to make sure that every student is the center of our decision-making processes. For Winchester, our vision for student learning is supporting students through their social, emotional, and academic growth. Elementary is such an exciting place because we get students that are entering their school career and it is up to us to support them when they move on to middle school, into high school, and the path to their future. We encourage risk-taking, not only for our students, but for staff as well. And with that includes many conversations around perseverance, how to collaborate, and put in hard work and effort to achieve their goals. One of my areas of growth is evaluating our data and making steps towards change, not only for our classrooms, but for our students as well. We are in a different time in education and really looking at the whole child and making sure we are doing everything we can to support each student individually is where we will see our success. We have great plans in place for our literacy, math, and we are excited that our attendance increased by 6% last year, which means when kids are here, they are learning and they are growing. Our goals are to increase proficiency in reading and math by 3%, which may not seem like a lot, but with the goals and plans we have in place, it will take time before we see the hard work we are implementing, create the change school-wide, and we are already seeing that, which has been exciting even for early October. So some of our plans to meet that goal. We have a 5D instructional focus on purpose with instruction, looking at our curriculum and best teaching strategies, and really digging into assessment to drive our instruction. We have core review meetings that are happening this week, actually. And we are looking at our data and really forming those decisions in our core. We have classrooms that are reading and writing each day. You'll see some student work highlighted as you enter the library. And we have ELA leaders supporting teachers. We're doing a focus on small group instruction. And in math, we are doing a lot of the same things. We have math leaders that are supporting teachers. We are active participants in our math studio. We were a math studio school last year and now we get to see that process grow at Fur Grove. And we're working on habits of mind and interaction and really trying to get teachers into classrooms through learning walks. Some ways we're improving our attendance is parent communication through the classroom and the office. We're utilizing Parent Square. And we're meeting with families at booster club meetings. And one of my goals with our families this year is to give a monthly progress check so they understand where we are and how we're growing or how we're adapting our goals. So with that. Thank you again for taking your time. I could go on for a very long time, but I understand we have other things to do. And I appreciate your time visiting each school and getting to know our students and staff. You are always welcome at Winchester. Our school home is your school home. And thank you for allowing me to be part of this wonderful organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Pertle. Are there any questions that any directors has? That's great, thank you. Just a reminder that if you haven't had a chance to fill out a card, if you wanted to speak to the board, now is your chance to go grab it and fill it out quickly. Now we have a wonderful report from our high school students that represent the leadership team, Sylvia Ekman and Spencer Bingham. And we are very thankful, they're both very, very busy, active students, and it is wonderful that they take the time to come and do this, so take it away.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks for having us. I think on campus, we're finally getting into the flow of things and looking forward to what the rest of the year is going to bring. From homecoming to college representatives, everyone on campus is super busy. Looking at leadership, we selected a homecoming theme, I think we announced it last week, and that's Miami Knights. And then with that, students not playing a fall sport are able to start powder puff practices last week. We're getting everyone active on campus and also competing in a tournament, the Wednesday of Homecoming Week. A lot of homecoming now, there's only 12 days left, from dress-up days to lunchtime activities, the assembly, homecoming court, bum themes, and a dance. The entire class is at its busiest. And then aside from homecoming, our leadership program was able to nominate a student to join the staff behavior team at the high school. Kate Miller, she's working on improving, or she's working on improving like connection between that and also working on improving student outcomes through positive reinforcement. This isn't a leadership thing, but I think it's good news and it's always fun to share. The behavior team gathered data about new cellphone policy campus and is proud to share that 63% of students believe there's less cellphone use in classrooms this year. And then our junior class representative, Ryan Wilson, facilitated the first lunch with Mr. Vickery last Friday. I think he had a good time and students were able to stop by the leadership room during second lunch to ask questions, voice concerns, or just learn a little bit more about our principal. And then we're sharing information this week about the first cycle of club grants this school year. And it's going to be open to all student-led clubs on campus and we look forward to seeing the impact these programs are able to make with a little extra funding. Sorry.
Alright, just a little bit about the, you know, sports going on at RHS. So our girls soccer team played last night against North Medford at home. The boys soccer team is playing away against North Bend and South Medford this week. Our cross-country team is racing on Friday at the Rose City Classic in Portland. Tomorrow, there's a home volleyball game against South Medford. Varsity starts at 6:45. And on Friday, football will be playing at home against Willamette. And the bum theme is Pinkout to support breast cancer awareness. At every home sporting event, actually, the bum theme is Pinkout in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. All of our four sports teams are working extra hard to earn a bid to the playoffs this month. From Saturday to morning practices, it's hard to find a time when there isn't a program working on campus. Although fall sports are in full swing, winter sport programs are starting practices as well. From basketball open gyms to mat clubs, RHS athletes are busy.
Aside from athletics, there's also a lot going on with academics today. Students had the opportunity to attend the Douglas County College Fair. There are over 50 different representatives to connect with students and give out pens, but also connecting about futures and different opportunities available to students, both at our school and then throughout the entire Douglas County. And then there've also been representatives from different branches of the military connecting the students on campus throughout the entire school year. Last, we heard 50 push-ups and you can get a free t-shirt pretty much any day of the week. And then the college fair was exciting, but it also has everyone thinking about the day of testing that's happening next Wednesday. Our senior class will take the ASVAB, juniors are going to take the PSAT, and then the sophomore class is going to take the pre-ACT later this year. And then this morning, our senior class gathered on the football field to take the class photo during advisory. I don't think, I think we got a not blurry one, so that's good. And then from the Astor Club, member induction on Monday to a groom-team meeting on Friday. There are so many different clubs and organizations for students to participate in on campus, 11 meetings to be exact. Not sure if anyone's attending all of them, but I think someone's trying to.
Alright, so the next time that we're going to meet with you guys, it will be one week out from the winter sports season, wrapping up conferences, and we will submit our college applications. So I think it's safe to say that we're all going to be looking forward to the weeks to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job. Lots of, lots of news. And now we're thrilled to recognize students and staff being honored by their schools for outstanding achievement in moving our strategic plan forward. And we have, I want to quickly say that when this is over, when we break for people to leave, if you are a winner of an award and you would like your picture taken with the board, please stay and we'll take a quick picture before you leave. And now we have Director Anne Krimmets, she is going to do the student recognition.
Well, good evening. I'm excited to be able to do this. This is my first opportunity and being able to express our, just our pride in some of you great students that are going to be recognized today. A lot of times, these days, people hear comments like, "Oh, kids these days." And my response is, "Yeah, aren't they awesome?" And, and that is the way we feel about our, our kids, that we have a very positive attitude. And tonight, we just get a chance to personally express that to just a few of you, highlight just a few of you. So I, first of all, I wanted to bring Zachariah Shyeb. And he's from Winchester here. Yay, Zachariah. Let me tell you a little bit about Zach. He's, oh, yes, any family, come on up and, and come stand with Zachariah. Teachers, because he's, he's representing all of the work you do with him and we're glad to honor you today. Zachariah is an exceptional fifth-grade student at Winchester Elementary. He enjoys learning and is an active contributor to the classroom, which has helped him to be a high-achieving student. However, what really sets him apart is his character. Zach is one of the friendliest kids you'll meet. He generally cares for others and is known for being honest and fair. While playing his various sports, good job. Zach displays great sportsmanship and coachability. That means you listen to your coach. Everyone loves to be around Zach because he makes people feel special and he's lots of fun. It is easy to see that Zach embodies what it means to be an outstanding leader in our Winchester Wolf Pack. So congratulations, Zach. Come back. Now we're in a highlight, a student from Fremont Middle School, and that's Kada Brown. Family or, or friends, come on up. Now, Kada is a model student. She's a leader who leads by example and her engagement and her ability to follow directions, show respect, and maintain high standards. She speaks volumes to those around her. Not only is she a captain of her volleyball team, but she also participates in the marching band at the high school while being a leader in all of her classes. So you're very involved. Even with all the additional activities after school that keep her quite busy, she maintains excellent grades. In the moments of chaos, Kada is a stable example to those around her. She sets goals for herself and always tries to major up to her own lofty expectations of what a true student athlete should be. We appreciate that. She is a clear example of a student who embodies Fremont Middle School epic values. So congratulations, Kada. Now we are moving on up to the high school. And we want to call up Lily Bland. Come on up, family. Oh, you've got lots of support here. Lily is an exceptional student. She excels in all areas. Her kindness, engagement, and respectfulness are evident in her interactions with the other students and teachers. She consistently delivers high-quality work and her quiet nature does not hinder her from demonstrating exceptional prowess in public speaking and engaging in discussions on personal subjects. Her unwavering determination and fearlessness are truly inspiring. Even in the face of adversity, Lily fearlessly tackles challenging college courses and continues to thrive. Her dedication, resilience, and commitment to her education make her a truly deserving candidate for this recognition. So we congratulate you, Lily. And last, don't go too far away, you teachers and from the high school, is Elizabeth Quok. Elizabeth is a hard-working and organized student with a positive attitude. She excels in both academics and peer interactions, always being polite, cooperative, and a great communicator. That's great potential for a school board member. Her dedication to math is impressive. Having completed math 11, or 111 and 112 during the summer, she now is taking dual-credit calculus as an 11th grader after excelling in a highly competitive 10th grade honors class. So you've been working hard at your math here. Elizabeth is also an excellent reader and writer, a critical thinker, and a compassionate community member. Her service in the Key Club is a testament to her commitment to her community. Her desire to succeed shines through with her meticulous and all her thoughtful work. She is also organized and works well with her peers in partner shares and small group discussions. Elizabeth makes everyone around her better. That's a nice thing to say about you. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
And now we have the Crystal Apple Awards for our teachers. The first one we have is Jessica Grubbs. She's an instructional assistant. Is she here? Family, fellow, friends, come on up. What a wonderful group. Jessica Grubbs is currently a very hard-working instructional assistant for Winchester. She is also an upcoming student teacher who will change the lives of many students, including the ones she already had the chance to work with. Jessica truly works hard to build relationships with every student she interacts with. Her enthusiasm for continuous learning and positive attitude are highly contagious. She will be invaluable wherever her educational journey takes her. The Winchester staff wishes her the best as she begins to embark on her new journey as a student teacher on our campus this winter. Winchester has truly loved having her as an IA for the past few years, but is even more excited for her next adventure. She is and will always be part of the Wolf. And her apple says, "Having a positive mindset is the most important part of any journey." Congratulations, Jessica. Yeah, you guys probably want to stay up there, yeah. So we have, the person we're honoring this time is a second-grade teacher from Winchester, Ashley Marshall. When you hear about a loving and caring teacher at Winchester, you think of Ashley Marshall. Mrs. Marshall has a previous, was a previous student at Winchester from kindergarten through fifth grade and has been a teacher at Winchester for 19 years. Mrs. Marshall is a vital member of the 5D instructional framework leadership team for the school, where her voice among her peers and students truly shows that she believes in the vision for student success at Winchester. She brings knowledge and history that is powerful to the constant improvement of the school. When you pass Mrs. Marshall on campus, you're always greeted with a positive smile and outlook to the date. She truly has a passion for students, believing they are successful while providing a loving and high-expectation environment for them to thrive. And her crystal apple says, "Mrs. Marshall is the reason why so many smile each day." Congratulations, Ashley. And at this time, we will dismiss before we have the business portion, but if you want your picture taken with the entire board, award winners, please remain. The rest of you are free to leave. If you did want to address the board, please fill out a card. This is your last opportunity to fill that card out. Thank you. Okay, our meeting now is resuming. We do not have any people that are wanting to participate in public participation. That being said, we will move on. And Superintendent Gordon, would you please do a review of the agenda and communication to the board?
You bet. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update. In your packet, we provided a financial report for you and some committee minutes. You can notice those have been added to your packet. In terms of communication to the board, I want to excuse and wish Vice Chair Cotton well. It's home ill, and also excuse Director Shortcliff, who's attending a conference this evening. Thank you.
Agenda items for your consideration are minutes from the September 11th and 25th board meetings, minutes from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, recommendations for employment, and notices of resignation, surplus items and gifts to the district. I would also like to add just a personal note of thank you to Doyle and Gail Ward, Mike Cleary of Abby's Pizza, Select Temp, and Team Smiles, and Nate and Delisa Keplinger for their support. for their support and gifts to the school district. So that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a required report, Division twenty-two standards. It's the report on compliance for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. This is a mandatory annual report in accordance with Oregon Administrative Rule five eight one zero two 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 three oh five. And Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will be presenting that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All rules adopted by the State Board of Education go into chapter five eighty-one, which is ODE's agency number. There are twenty-six divisions within the chapter that rules can be assigned to. When rules are assigned to chapter twenty or to Division twenty-two, they become part of Oregon's standards for elementary and secondary schools. The educational standards that either the Oregon Legislature or the State Board has determined must be met in order to be a standard school district. Compliance with the Division twenty-two standards ensures every student in Oregon Public Schools is provided with a baseline level of support of service that meets the standards set by the state. These standards are not the only requirements that districts must adhere to, but they are monitored and compliance is tied to state school fund monies. The Division twenty-two standards include over fifty individual rules, which can be categorized in four large buckets. Teaching and learning, health and safety, district performance and accountability, and human resources and staffing. Within teaching and learning and health and safety, there are several subcategories. These are a few examples of specific rules that fall into each of these categories. Within curriculum instruction, there's required instructional time, curriculum adoption, comprehensive school counseling. Within health and safety, every student belongs, suicide prevention plan, safety of school sports with concussions. Sorry. My computer is doing weird things. And within teaching and learning as well, we have administration of state assessments, identification of tag students, credit options. And we also have the complaint procedures that we are required to follow as a district, fingerprint-based background checks and teacher training related to dyslexia. Those are just a few of the fifty rules, fifty or more rules that we are required to follow. And what are the requirements of each rule? This is just some information where you can find more information, so resources, about the specific requirements for a certain rule. The rules at a glance is a high summary of each rule. And these resources are a good place to start. And for all of the specific details, you can consult the text of the actual rule if you want to sit and read through all of that information. And the newsletter highlights specific rules that are new, have recently been revised, or where there has been some confusion about requirements. What are the Division twenty-two standards assurances? And districts are required to report to the community in a school district board meeting and post the report on the district website. We have to do this yearly and it has to be done before November first. And then we have to submit the assurances to ODE by November fifteenth of each year. Once ODE has received all of the assurances, they go through a process of reviewing them and then they follow up with districts that have self-reported non-compliance with any of the rules. Last year, Division twenty-two standards insurance of compliance are the why. And this is what ODE says, it signals our commitment to providing a high-quality educational experience and equitable opportunities for all students. This is the floor of education to provide it to students, not the ceiling. Assurances process offers an opportunity for districts who are not in compliance to reflect on areas in need of attention and receive technical assistance from ODE. What happens if the district is out of compliance? ODE reviews the district's proposed corrective action plan and either approves or rejects it. If the plan is not approved as submitted, ODE contacts the district and provides technical assistance and support. Once your plan is approved, the ODE continues to provide support, but that corrective action must be complete by the beginning of the next school year. And if you fail to come back into compliance, they could withhold a portion of the district's state school fund monies. Our report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year for our school district. And just to add some reminders, there are some Division twenty-two waivers for twenty-three, twenty-four. These are rules that were waived for that particular school year by ODE for particular reasons. And last year and currently, there are two requirements that have been waived. The first is section three of the assessment of essential skills rule. So not the entire section, just section three of the assessment requirements for graduation. This was waived for graduates beginning in twenty-twenty, which when it's COVID years, the beginning of the COVID years, and the waiver will be in place through the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. But section two of the essential skills rule, which is the local performance assessment requirement, remains in effect and districts must report on compliance with this section. Also waived is the related requirement that districts have a policy regarding whether English language learners may demonstrate proficiency on essential skills assessments for graduation in their language of origin. And a new rule that's in fact for the twenty-three, twenty, that was in effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is the menstrual dignity for students. This was actually adopted in October of twenty-twenty-three, but this is the first time that districts had to report on compliance with this rule. And this requires free and accessible menstrual products in every school bathroom K-12 for our students. There is a rule revision in effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and this has to do with health services. This was new requirements that were adopted by the State Board of Education in June of twenty-twenty-three. And this requires school districts to develop, implement and annually update a written prevention-oriented health services plan for all students. I'm happy to report that Rosewood Public Schools is in compliance with all Division twenty-two standards for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Looking ahead, compliance for this school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there are some new revised and revised rules and requirements. One of the new rules around district curriculum that we are already in compliance with is beginning this school year, districts must have a planned K-12 instructional program for social and emotional learning and a planned nine-twelve instructional program, which includes the personal financial education and higher education and career path skills content standards. In addition, with diploma requirements, credit requirements for students who were first enrolled in grade nine in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year or first enrolled in grade nine in any subsequent school year have to include half a credit in personal financial education and half a credit in higher education and career path skills. That was Senate Bill Three that was passed in twenty-twenty-three. Also modified diploma, extended diploma and certificate of attendance. Districts must annually provide parents information about diploma availability and requirements and disclosure about certificates of attendance. On-site access to all courses is required for a diploma at all high schools. And in addition, substance use prevention and intervention plan is new for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, requires a comprehensive plan for substance use prevention and intervention, includes K-12 substance use prevention education that meets the health education standards and requires a minimum of one ODE opioid prevention education lesson in grade six, seven and eight and once in high school. That was Senate Bill two thirty-eight, which passed in twenty-twenty-three. And just a side note for this, these are state ODE developed lessons. We have our Indian education lessons that are also developed by the state. These lessons are coming from ODE. They are delayed right now. So we are waiting for those to come forward, but as soon as they do, then we will work on getting them implemented in our schools. Are there any questions? Yes, the opioid lessons. Yes, the opioid lessons have been delayed from the state. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And again, we do not have any action that we need to take on this. Moving on to the approval of Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, nine, designation of American Education Week, that's on page eighty-seven of your packet. This is a resolution supporting national recognition of education during the week of November eighteenth through the twenty-second of twenty-twenty-four. We recognize that we are well in advance of that week, but this is our only regular business meeting beforehand. The resolution states this designation of American Education Week, November eighteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, nine, whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are our community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, we, the Douglas County School District Number Four Board of Directors, do hereby proclaim November eighteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four as the one hundred and third annual observance of American Education Week. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Resolution is provided.
I will motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five dash nine as recommended.
Is there a second?
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving into committee reports, Dr. Anne Crimmits, would you please give the report for curriculum and instruction?
Yes, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met September twenty-fifth to discuss our twenty-four, twenty-five goals for the teaching and learning department and curriculum adoptions. The goals of our teaching and learning department are to focus on reading, math and a path to graduation while concentrating on grade level standards for all students. Students should be reading and writing every day in every classroom and every subject. So this is kind of a a something that we are strongly emphasizing now, that there will be some of that in every subject. Teachers will conduct assessments ongoing as the students learn so that we can adjust the instruction as needed. So we're not going to just assess at the beginning and assess at the end. There will be some ongoing assessment so we can adjust and make improvements before we come to the end and get an assessment that we are not particularly happy with. So that's the idea behind our change in that way. Schools and teacher leaders are being supported through more and more professional development. We're investing time and energy into our professional development of all of our educators because it begins there. Our curriculum adoptions, the district will be adopting a new K through five literacy curriculum with the goal that students will be able to read proficiency proficiently and love reading. And the love of reading is what's going to help them be proficient. And so just this last week, we had a special program, Reading Under the Lights. And it was in the, under the stadium lights and families came with their kids and spent the evening reading under the lights. So books were provided. There were things that they could actively involve in. And along with the families, they also had some athletes, student athletes there from the high school that would read with them and it helped to establish the fact that reading is a cool thing to do, even athletes do it and, you know, enjoy it. And so we really felt like that was a, just one more positive thing that we can do to encourage our kids to start to love reading. The district will also be adopting a new six through twelve health curriculum. And the subcommittee will be involved in this process. And that's an important process to be involved in as that gets developed. And as with all other curricula, families have access to what their children are learning through our learning management system and also on our website. We want to be transparent. We want to partner with families. So this is very much a part of what our ideal is, that there's, families are in the loop and they always have the option to review those lessons and may choose to opt their child out if they so desire. So we want to honor that.
Thank you, Director Crimmits. And I will give the report from the Student Services Committee. We met on October second to discuss annual restraint and seclusion data and special program classrooms. By law, the district is required to track yearly restraint and seclusion data and make it available to the public. The district saw a significant decrease in situations that require the use of restraint last year. The district does not practice seclusion. Staff receive Crisis Prevention Institute training several times a year. Student Services is currently reviewing all special programs. The number of students on individualized education plans stands at seven hundred and eighty. This does not include students whose primary need is speech and language related. Lastly, funding from the Oregon Department of Education does not currently cover the costs of the district's percentage of students on IEPs. That concludes my report. And now we will hear from our Purchasing Services Director, Denny Austin.
Am I hot now? When you're hot, you're hot. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about purchasing and we're going to go through it quickly. I'm not going to make you listen to all of the alphabet soup that I sent out to you. I'm sure that Director Cubic already read all of those statutes and the administrative rules and our policies. But so I'll just, when you see me hit the button up here, there we go. So anytime a specification comes to purchasing or somebody's hunting for some small thing for their classroom or their building, I go through this by decision. And often I can stop right there at number one. I can actually supply something back to that teacher or that building through surplus. So since the beginning of this year, we've probably saved close to twenty thousand dollars in providing a surplus item to a building without having to go out and buy new. But then there are also qualified rehabilitation facilities, organizations like Sunrise Enterprises. There's the Oregon Correction Enterprises where we can buy furniture or large pieces of welded equipment. or large pieces of welded equipment through the Oregon State Prison. We often will use state price agreements. As a member of ORCAP, we have access to almost all of the state price agreements. So much of the public awarding process is saved for us by the state going out through Department of Administrative Services and buying. There are also, also intergovernmental agreements. And I know that there are food pictures. That's not the Independent Grocers Association. That's for independent, uh, that's for, uh, intergovernmental agency agreements. Then we also will use cooperatives and we will use bids and proposals. The cooperatives that we participate in, many of them are free. The ORCAP, which I'd mentioned, the Oregon Education Technology Consortium is a great tool for us to go out and buy projectors, televisions, microphones, things that they have bid out with the idea that they will be used in an education setting. So not only do K twelve get access to O E T C, but it's also available to higher education. And then there are a number of organizations that are set up that we participate in. Omnia Partners is one, U S Communities is one, TIPS is the Texas Institute of Procurement Specialists. So we have a, a number of cooperatives that we will use that have also competitively bid products that we may be using in our buildings. And then there are a few that we actually subscribe to. Amazon, they went out two years ago and competitively, competitively bid to be awarded a number of products, but you have to subscribe. You have to have a membership to Oregon, uh, to Amazon Business Prime to be able to use them. There's also KCDA, that's the Kent County, County, excuse me, King County Directors Association. And we pay a subscription fee to them, but that gives us ask, access to their entire warehouse of products and access to many items that we would have to go out and bid independently, modular units, flooring, lighting. All of those things can be purchased from KCDA without having to rebid them. So when we have eliminated all of those free sources that we've already used, we then have to go out and do our own work. We may get a specification. We don't have enough knowledge of that specification. So I have to publish a request for information or I might know, know who is capable of doing the work. So then I would publish a request for qualification, an R F I or an R F Q. If I can just go shopping for it and it's less than five thousand dollars, I can buy it. That my delegated authority is up to five thousand, so I can buy it without anyone else being involved. I'm going to have to put my hands in my pockets because they're, they're my worst enemy when I talk. Intermediate procurements here and in the school district, our intermediate, intermediate process is greater than five thousand, but less than fifty thousand. And then if we have an item that we need to extend, we have a, a particular kind of computer software, but the only way to expand that computer software is to sole sourcing. We, we have to have justification for, for going to a sole source. Emergency procurements and special procurements are two more of the seven ways that we open source purchases. But if it's going to be a formal procurement, something that is fifty thousand dollars or more, our policies say that we need to use an invitation to bid or a request for proposal. And I say our policies because our policies have a much lower threshold than the state policies. So for small, we're at five thousand, Oregon is at twenty-five thousand. For intermediate, we're at fifty thousand, Oregon is at two hundred and fifty thousand. And above two hundred and fifty thousand, that's when Oregon starts looking for formal processes. For us, we get to fifty thousand and we publish an invitation to bid or a request for proposal. Small procurement, that is five thousand dollars of unfragmented purchases. It has to be pre-approved by an administrator and we may do some market research or we may get some quotes because the easiest way to empty a bucket is a pinhole prick in the bottom of it. So those small procurements end up costing the district more than the big, big jobs where we obviously see that there's a lot of money there. Intermediate, I'd mentioned between five and fifty, but the only thing that we need to do for that is secure three quotes or attempt to ser- secure three quotes. And the way we do that is by providing clear specifications. If you're seeing a theme that everybody's eating in these pictures, uh, yeah, that's, these are, by the way, copyright, copyright free images. I have quite a collection in my phone. So for competitive bidding, this is for, used for goods and services. It can be used as an intermediate procurement or a formal procurement. And the flexibility that it lacks is the result that you have to award to the low-priced selection. So occasionally we'll run into a vendor that's providing very poor service to the district, but they do provide the lowest price. In fact, I just canceled a, a part of a purchase order this morning that we ordered in April and had yet to receive. So they were the low price. It's just that they didn't provide the product. And I'm kind of behind you, so let me get back up to where you are. So requests for proposals, these are for bigger projects, more complex projects. They seek a vendor solution. Uh, they're, we're asking them to provide us a proposal. But the nice thing about this is price is not the key factor. We develop a, a set of evaluation criteria. Price can be part of that, but what we're really seeking for the district is the best value. The disadvantage with the RFP process is it takes about four times longer than an invitation to bid. And I mentioned sole source. We have to research to make sure that it is an item that is actually a sole vendor provided item. Just because a department likes this shiny brand doesn't mean that's the only company that makes that kind of product. So we have to be very careful and then we have to publish a seven-day protest period. So I take care of that. You don't see that happen. It happens behind the scenes. But if we're going to sole source something, then I publish on the Oregon Buys government website that, um, we're using sole source to buy something. An emergency procurement, that can happen at any time, but it takes a declaration either from the superintendent that it is an emergency or from a municipality or county, state. And the, still the goal is to encourage competition. So if we have an emergency, we'll still try to reach out to three vendors to get the, the best value for the district. There are two other categories of procurement that we use from time to time. Architecture and engineering, there are three different ways to acquire architects or engineers. And for public improvement, there are four different ways to, to award a public improvement. And the most recent example of an exempted process is when you had a hearing for the CMGC. That is an exempted process under public improvements. So let's just look real quick at the bid data from last year. Uh, we, um, we published twenty, uh, either invitations to bid or requests for proposal. Most of them were for goods and services and the majority of those were goods and services in the intermediate category. Because that's what I fill my warehouse up with. And I've got about a thousand different stockkeeping IDs in the warehouse. And those are about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of items that are sitting there. I picked three. I picked copy paper, Tyconderoga number two pencils. If they're the best, why are they still number two? I've asked that a couple of times. And then Crayola crayons. So the copier paper represents thirty thousand reams of copy paper for last year. The pencils represent, uh, just short of six thousand dozen pencils. And the crayons are five thousand boxes of twenty-four out, twenty-four count. So if we had bought those in the open market and gone to Staples Shopping, the copy of paper would have cost us thirty-one thousand dollars more than we spent. For the pencils, it would have been thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars more. And for the crayons, it would have been eleven thousand. So just those three items. And to give you a little, uh, structure, I bid out almost four hundred different stockkeeping units last year. So the savings is greatest in these very heavily used items, but there is savings throughout all four hundred of those compared to open market pricing. So just on those three, we saved fifty-six thousand dollars. Some of those, um, items were distributed to out, outline, outside school districts. We support, uh, a, a bigger buying profile than the smaller school districts do. And so we pass some of the savings along. They pay a twenty percent administrative premium on office supplies. They pay a three percent administrate, administrative premium on, um, paper. But when you, when we figured it all out, it's, it still remains cost neutral and we, we actually get a little. So of the hundred and fifteen thousand that the outside school districts paid to us, eleven thousand of it was those administrative fees that we collected. So we made a little more. And that concludes how I fit into the strategic plan.
Thank you very much for that delectable report. Um, do we have any questions? Thank you very much for that report. Okay, and now we have our wonderful superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. It's, uh, always difficult. Nice job, Denny. Oh, and I, my, I have great pictures of students. There's no food in here. I apologize. But, um, thank you. Great to see your family in those pictures too. It's lovely. Um, I have a short report for you tonight. Um, I want to talk real quickly about, you know, we talk a lot about our strap plan. It is how we've organized our organization. It is how we think about budgeting and savings and improvement, but I want to just spend just a minute tonight talking about a couple of things, um, tonight. I want to start with what it looks like in action. We talk about care and support and instruction and I'll give you a couple of examples. I could have given you a hundred examples tonight. Just picked a couple out here. Uh, recently we had one of our teachers, the high school, Sherry Carson, who was named the Regional Teacher of the Year. She does much for not just the high school and not just our school district, but across the county and supporting CTE, our vocational programs and pathways. She's a great example of great instruction, care and support. We had our Jill Aiden students creating anti-bullying videos for their peers recently. It was fantastic. It's always uh, fantastic when our students can have other students their age, speak their language and tell them things that are important. They kind of know what we're going to say, but when their peers say that, it resonates in a different way. We had our FFA students helping out at, uh, the Second Annual Douglas County Farm Bureau's Ag Day. That was for fourth graders and private school students from around the county. And as Director Crimmits mentioned tonight, just another example, we had, um, students from Green and Sunny Slope, uh, R V S, Ver Grove, Winchester. And I believe the college was there as well, helping out with reading under the lights. As Director Crimmits put it well, it's kind of putting in action the love of reading, getting books into kids, creating their own libraries and to make it something that's cool and enjoyable. It's neat that they can see that. Um, it was a good experience for kids. October is National Principal Month. And I want to celebrate our school leaders. We have great leaders that are helping lead instruction and instructional practices and supporting the heck out of families and students and staff. Uh, we have great people. We're, I've kept myself blessed to work with great people in this organization. Super thankful for our leaders here. I want to wish them very, very happy National Principals Month in October. Want to talk for a minute about assessments. It's, it's well said that there's much, much more to a student's profile than an assessment you take on a day or over the course of a couple of days. These are summit of assessments that are, um, required by the state. And they are important to us, but I want to make sure we understand there are, it's a kaleidoscope of information we get. It's wider than just, students are more than a number on a piece of paper, but they definitely are instructive for us as we think about, you know, kind of our own trajectory and as we really measure if what we're doing is working to increase outcomes for students. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at what these actually are, you can get sample copies. I've liked, I've appreciated giving them to adults in their community to see how they fare on our math assessments or E L A assessments, um, our science assessments. And I'll just say this, anybody that believes that rigor is not part of our organization is not really looking at our organization. We all continue to say, one of the things that we're serious about is increasing access and opportunity, giving kids more choice and increasing rigor. Increasing rigor in our organization is a key attribute of kids leaning into the work. They have to do things that value us. It's important for us to support people, but also to keep really high standards. So these assessments, um, what this, we don't have time to go through the whole thing. I hope you'll take a look at this, but what this is, is we have, uh, in certain grades, in grades three, four, five in elementary, six, seven, eight in middle school and an eighth and, and eleventh grade, excuse me, at high school, there are assessments for English Language Arts, um, which is a combination of reading and writing and comprehension, some, some elements there, mathematics. And then in select grades in five, uh, eight and eleven, there are state assessments for science. So what we've, um, it's pretty important to look at these. So as we take a look at these, what you'll see here is the, the, um, highlighted, there's a couple of data sets here. The highlighted ones in green are where our school district sits above the state average. Now I'll say this, it is my expectation that we're always above the state average because our staff are well above the state average. And our kids are well above the state average in terms of our expectations. We haven't always been here, but it, it's good to see that we're increasing in terms of our achievement. Again, this is one measure with students, but you can see that the trend is our expectations are moving up and we're seeing a move up. As you'll look to the right in each one of those cells, so you'll take a, you can take a look that even in a couple instances in which we're above state average, we trended down a little bit. And in some instances, we trended up. A good example is eleventh grade English Language Arts. We actually had a twenty-one percent increase with eleventh grade, which is really, really significant. Um, we've seen some downtrending as well. Keep in mind, these data sets though are different students year to year. So for me, it's more important to keep an eye on the cohort data. So you've had students that achieve. The standards change every year. They're more rigorous. And so to be clear, a year's worth of learning, if you're behind, is a guarantee that you're not going to meet the next year's standard. Everybody who's behind in a standard needs more than a year's worth of learning. So it's not a failure when you see kids not achieve and not achieve again. They could have had at least a year's worth of learning. So our focus has been on that, but we have some, there's some really positive things with this. Um, I'll continue to say, um, we have a high expectation around achievement. Um, and we're taking a look at ways we can better support our teachers, our instructional assistants, our principals, um, our families and making sure that we can partner together for the betterment of students. Um, I want to talk just for a few minutes tonight about, about budgeting. It's not the most provocative topic, but it is a super important topic. We are at the latter end, coming up to the end of the biennium budget. And so just a reminder that when the state adopts a budget, um, it comes in a two-year cycle. So we're getting to the end of the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium and preparing for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium. It's an important time. There's a long session in the legislature. Been highly involved, working with legislators in our own county and beyond, the governor's office and others to try to help, um, frame the opportunity cost of both not funding education and funding things early and the opportunity of funding it early. I would do want to mention a couple of things. Um, and I just, these are a smattering of things that have just kind of been on my mind recently. I want you to know, and it's important to the public also to know that there has, there has been, there continue to be an onslaught of new legislation that costs significant amount of money. Um, recently we've had, um, you know, some, some really logical, uh, adjustments in state statute. In some ways, in some ways illogical in my opinion. But some of these, uh, adjustments But some of these adjustments just simply cost us, cost our organization a significant amount of dollars that aren't funded. They're unfunded mandates. I was talking to a school district. I won't use our own for this example. Recently, that spent about $50,000, they set aside about $50,000 in their budgeting, the budgeting process for unemployment, for example. The district is about $800,000 into unemployment costs. The legislation really is the key to this. There's been shifts in legislation that's their state mandates. We also have seen recently, and you may have read about this, some changes in PERS rates, for example. And this is not, this is, I guess, pseudo-legislative. It's more about what markets do. I do want to commend the board for the decision strategically to sell bonds to lower our rate. That was strategically super, super smart, continues to save us money. But as we've looked at the global swings in markets that our economies are all attached to, we knew there would be a cost in terms of this. I do want to give props to Cheryl in the business department as we've thought through. We anticipated some of these costs and we have been saving in our own budget for some of these costs to offset them, but it'll be significant. We still are kind of penciling the exact numbers, but I would be pretty confident to say the PERS adjustments we need to make will probably be in the neighborhood of $3.5 to $4.5 million for our school district. So again, there's costs there. What we are doing now, to be transparent and clear with everyone, organization or community, we are in the process of really taking a look at every major grant and funding source we have. That would include SIA, our State School Fund, all title grants and other grants to take a look at, you know, reviewing these. Are, what are these doing to move the work forward? The work of the strategy plan forward. And that includes, of course, increasing student achievement. As an aside to, just so everyone's aware, we are in the midst of a financial audit right now in the business office and that process is ongoing right now. That will be wrapping itself up next month. And then the board will be involved in the process of getting the report on the audit. I'll say this, we have a responsibility to build great systems. And Demming said this, if you don't know William Edward Demming, he was, he did several things actually, but he had a great business mind. He always said this, "A bad system always, you know, beats a good person every time." So it's incumbent on us to build systems that work as we think about budgeting and other things. Finally, I did want to just do a follow-up with you. Thank you for your work and leaning into the board on facilities and for our operations folks who have kind of helped lead this. And Chelsea's been a great part of this as well. Yes, we've taken a look at kind of where we're at facilities-wise. Thank you to the board for the work on putting a priority on facilities. I did want to let you know that we are developing a survey that will go out to staff and families in our community to get input on facilities priorities from them. We'll also make sure that we are transparent about what the current condition of our facilities are. And then we will be hosting some community meetings, Q and As with people who are interested in finding out more about kind of our facilities and that plan going forward. And that, happy to host any questions, but this is the report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Cordell. And now we have individual directors' reports. Director Hammerson, do you have anything you would like to share?
I got nothing for the kids.
Director Kermitz?
No, I said my piece.
And you, Director Cubic?
Yes, I have just three quick reports. One, that I have a neighbor who received a new fence at Fullerton Four and the fence was above the elevation of the ground and it would cause her concern and her husband concern. And the school district has remedied that. And they came to me and said, "Will you please convey our thanks?" So thanks to the district for that. Thanks to facilities for that. Secondly, I have a show and tell. A member of our maintenance staff gave this to me on Monday. It's a leaf with a smiley face on it. I have, my house backs on Fullerton Four and Sunday I went and cut the weeds behind the fence. Then Monday, coincidentally, the crew of one came to mow. And the fellow that runs the mowers, named Jim in maintenance. And I think he does throughout the district. But what I, and so I took a ladder and leaned against fence and gave him a thumbs up and he stopped and talked to me for a moment. We've talked before because he does Fullerton Four. And he gave me this. And then he said, and I don't know, he had a bag or a pocket full of them that he had made up. And he said, "If the kids are in the way or something goes on or cross paths with one of your students, I give them this." And I said, "Well, that's really cool." And that was a small discussion and then he went back to mowing. So I watched for a little while, standing in my ladder, looking over the fence. Probably looked a little weird, but I was looking over the fence. He finished his mowing and then slowed down, stopped for some reason at the end of the track. And this boy who had been out recess had stopped. And he was watching and watching and watching and watching. And as soon as Jim stopped, he went right up to the mower and he got a leaf with a smile on it. And that little boy seemed the happiest person in the world. And he went back off to school. My third story, that was such a good story. My third school experience is I did some random visits with Fullerton Four parents this morning. They were dropping off their children at the walkway. And there were at least five families that had opportunity to interact with and they were all positive. They were complimenting their teachers and they were saying how happy they were with small schools this year. And there were lots of smiles and no frowns. And that's such good feedback from our parents that had a person to all involve.
Thank you, Director Cubic. Last week, Director Cotton and I were invited by teacher Mary Milepsy to speak to her Introduction to Education class. So this course is designed for students wanting to become teachers. They are a wonderful group of students that are highly interested in a career in the field of education. They're very inquisitive and interested in everything they've learned so far in the semester. Soon they'll be learning about school funding and regulation. So, but it was an honor to answer their questions and dialogue with them. We were able to chat with some of the students on a personal level. I personally was very impressed with the vision that they had for their educational journey and the path that they're, that they were going on. One gentleman had, he's in CTE, he's not sure if he'll go and, he really wants to go into law enforcement, but definitely EMT. But I asked him, "Why are you taking this class?" And he said, "Because I want to serve and I want to know more about children in serving them." So I was very impressed by that. But as an added and classy note, these fine students sent personal notes of thanks to us for sharing with them. So these are our kids. They are A1 all the way. Okay, so our next meeting will be October 23rd, 24th. It'll be followed by a work session in Central Office Boardroom. So this concludes all of our regular business. If I don't have any objections, the meeting is concluded. Thank you.